Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Tampa City Council Workshop Meeting to Order at this time. I yield to Councilmember Clendenon.
We could please stand for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if we can have roll call, please.
Carlson.
Here.
Hertek.
Here.
Clendenon.
Here.
Henderson.
Present.
Vera. Miranda.
Here.
Minniscoco.
Here.
We have physical form.
All right, just a couple of items. Councilmember Vera will be here in a few minutes. We have a few memos to go over. Item number two, there is a request to continue this item to the January 30th, 2025 workshop. May I have a motion to that effect?
And I'll second this, this was mine. I just, I wanted to let know, I had a meeting with all the department heads. There's really nothing, there's a lot of things moving right now, so there's nothing concrete to report. By January of next year, we'll have something really concrete and specific to report. I just, the positive news is it's all moving in the right direction. Everybody's flowing in the right direction. I feel really good about it.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that's to continue that. We also received a memo for item number five to be continued to June 27th. May I have a motion? Motion from Councilmember Miranda, seven, Councilmember Clendenon, all in favor? Aye. Next motion for item number seven to be continued to August 29th. We have a motion from Councilmember Clendenon, seven, Councilmember Miranda, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And finally, item number eight, motion to continue this item to May 23rd. May I have a motion? Motion from Councilmember Miranda, seven, Councilmember Clendenon, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, that settles the agenda. Mr. Vaskey?
Yes, good morning. Justin Vaskey, Assistant City Attorney. Members of the public are allowed a reasonable opportunity at the beginning of today's city council meeting to address any item on the agenda before the city council takes official action on an item. A three-minute time limit applies to all speakers providing public comment. Speakers and members of the public are also reminded that they are to refrain from disruptive behavior, including making vulgar or threatening remarks, or making or causing disruptive noises or sounds, or displaying signs or graphics. Speakers are also reminded to refrain from making personal attacks against any city official, staff member, or members of the public. The chair will rule out of order any person who speaks without being recognized or attempts to address the city council from outside the speaker area at the podium. Persons failing to comply with the council rules may also be ruled out of order and, at the discretion of the chair, may be removed from the chambers for the remainder of that day or today's meeting. Now, for today's meeting, public comment is both at the beginning of this meeting, for those who want to speak before the items are heard, and also after each workshop item. However, members of the public can only choose before or after, not both. Finally, city council members should refrain from engaging a speaker under public comment, and the public should be aware that the city council does not take questions or have a dialogue during general public comment. This is your opportunity to express your position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to general public comment. If you're here to speak, please come on up and state your name. You'll have three minutes. Good morning, sir. Please state your name.
Good morning. My name is Darryl Heitch. Can I use the teleprompter thing, thing on the jiggle?
Yeah, we'll turn on the overhead. It'll activate in just a second.
He's waking up.
Kind of like us.
Pour some coffee on it.
He's coming out to check it.
There we go.
Yes, sir, we can see you. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Darryl Heitch. Couple days ago, myself and the president of the Hillsborough County Black Chamber of Commerce, we had the opportunity to go hear the president speak. And when we heard the president speak, I couldn't, I couldn't go past seeing those two words there that said reproductive freedom. And I asked her, I said, what does that mean to you, reproductive freedom? And then she answered from a micro perspective because we know that the theme was about abortion. But then I asked her, I said, take a look at this thing from a macro perspective. And what I did then was I said, let's break this word down. Let's break this word down. The word re means to do something over again, and productive means to produce something. And I said, let's look at this from the root word of what's happening here. And the root word of what I seen happening there was produce freedom. And I asked her the question, I said, how do you produce freedom? What are the things that you can do, we can do to produce freedom? And then it dawned on me, resolution number 568. Resolution number 568 is how we have an opportunity to produce freedom. Now, we also, and I applaud the council for bringing this forward and continuously bringing the conversation forward. I applaud the media for bringing it forward. But what I think we may be doing is putting a bandage over a shotgun wound. Because as I looked at the news media, and I looked at all the different organizations that are being selected to potentially participate in this reconciliation committee, I couldn't help but to ask, what was the vetting process to conclude that these are the organizations that need to be participating in this reconciliation committee? What was the thought pattern? I think that if we're going to truly produce freedom, we have to be intentional about what we're doing. We have to be strategic about it. We cannot just say, you know what, let's just arbitrarily throw out organizations that have been known throughout the community, some individuals that got a name, reputation in the community. That's not producing freedom. What that's going to ultimately put us in a situation of doing is reproducing something. The whole theme the other day, listening to the president and all the leaders that went before him, all they kept talking about was how to redo something that the previous administration done because they didn't get it right up front. So we have an opportunity, I'm asking you to please consider, as you produce freedom based upon resolution number 568, that you're mindful, that you're intentional, that you are moving in a strategic fashion so that we don't have to go back and try to correct this thing at a future date. You cannot move forward without having a strategic plan, even in deciding who you put on this committee. Don't just put a bandage over a shotgun wound as we produce freedom for resolution number 568.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, next speaker. Pastor Williams? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Pastor William. Located at 1112 East Scott Street, Paradise Missionary Baptist Church. You know, I want to read some script, just one paragraph. If God said this here, "If my people, which are called by my name, shall humble themselves and pray and turn from their wicked ways, then will I hear from heaven and forgive their sins and heal their land." You know, God want to do a whole lot for us, but we won't let him. We got to understand that we are people, we spiritual, and we thank God for this blessing to be able to come down and speak with y'all again. Knowing that the president was here this past Tuesday, or whether it was Monday, was here. And when the president or any governor, anybody come to Tampa, send them out there in the east Tampa and let them know what y'all are doing for us. And they all will see N-O-T-H-I-N-G, nothing. But we got to try to do what we can for ourselves. We pay, we are taxpayers. We pay our tax. We pay the water bill, the light bill. But y'all still trying to harm us, and why I don't know. But we got to understand that we are fearful of God, what he gonna do to us. So we gonna keep on praying and trusting in the law. And I thank God for each and every one of you all present here today. We got to understand that we are people. And we're, we're not just black peoples or just white people. We are people, period. We are God-fearing people, people who love God and trust God for everything. We realize that we're not being treated like citizens of the United States of America. We treat it like outcasts. But we got to understand, we got to get our head together, get our focus together, get our mind together, and do what God wants us to do, whether y'all lack it or not. You know, we got that, what I call a separate thing, y'all call them retainer land. Well, y'all only got them on Bearman Hike in Jackson High. You ain't got them nowhere. Retaining land, if you're gonna put retaining land, then put them downtown. Put them everywhere. Don't just put them in Bearman Hike in Jackson High. That's our land, and we want God to contain this blessing. Y'all have mercy on us all.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker? Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name is Haseen Caldwell. Thank you even better now. But I was just wanting to get up and say something about what Brother I said right there about the three, what it is, three, three, six, eight, that's it. Five, six, eight. What I say what people should have to do when they start an organization, basically, you have to get out in the community. Don't nobody know nothing. That's why the same thing keep happening. People saying that they gonna do this, and people say they gonna do this, but you're not going to the solution and doing what you supposed to do. A lot of people do it for themselves, but if you're doing it for the community and like, what a lot of people say, if you have passion for something, then you're gonna treat it a certain way. If you're just doing it just for the goods that it bring you and stuff like that, there, it's never gonna work because you're so busy taking your eye off what God wants you to do if you're a godly person, basically focusing on what God wants you to do and doing what you want, what the worldly flesh want. Excuse me, when we talk like that. But what I, that's all I have to say about the brother right there. What we need to do, if somebody gonna start organization and say they gonna help the community, the community. I came up here several, well, about like four times now, but I still don't know really about a lot of organizations that says they are doing these type of things. So what I say they should do is probably go out in the community and let more people know about it because you never know who's out there. You might find me just have visions and then you could put it together. So you got different parts of everything. So that's what I suggest for all the organizations to start doing is doing what they supposed to do and not what they want to do. For sure. I mean, that's it.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker? Yes, sir. Good morning, sir.
Uh, huru, Mantesna, Tampa, Florida. Want to say huru, huru means freedom in Swahili. We as African people should always be thinking about our freedom. Six hundred years we hadn't been free. And the system have a way of evolving slavery. Slavery is worse today for African people than it has ever been in the history of the world. They took a whole group of people, proud people, deeducated us, and say we're the first to do this and the first to do that. Life don't work that way. Most people you meet can't think. Most people you meet aren't independent thinkers. They really even aren't collective thinkers. Most people you meet are so conditioned and preconditioned and indoctrinated that they think in reverse. You meet some people who oppose the pedophilia. They say it's wrong for a 50-year-old man to sleep with a six- or seven-year-old child. They say that's wrong. They're legally, philosophically, ideologically, they're opposed to it. They 100% opposed to it. And a person might tell them, there ain't nothing wrong with it. Now, do you see anything wrong with that picture? A 50-year-old man sleeping with a three, four, five-year-old child. People would be horrified to hear and know that. Put him away, lock him up. But you got 700, 700 plus over 50-year-old men and women voting to send $100 billion to occupied Palestine to drop bombs on hospitals. Something's wrong with that picture. Something wrong with the picture that say, lock them up, say no to drugs, and all these other things that target African people. Specifically target African people and other people doing what they want to do. All that have to stop. We have to correct our way of thinking and bring everything into the proper perspective. Another thing I want to say is to Judge Christopher Sibella, that child support, hearing Officer Arabala Campbell and Charles Denton, you need to get rid of them. That whole child support situation got to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Good morning, sir. Good morning, sir. Come on up, please state your name.
Hello, good morning, my name is Todd Randolph, I've, uh, been a resident of the city of Tampa for fifteen years, I'm here to speak about workshop item number six, about the rules regarding artificial turf and the environmental impact. Uh, I find the use of, of fake plastic lawns and the increasing installation of fake plastic lawns being, uh, very concerning. Uh, it's well known that these artificial turf, fake residential lawns break down, contribute to the microplastics issue that we are, uh, facing today. I've heard leading scientific, uh, leaders talk about how the microplastics issue is an existential threat on the level of carbon emissions, climate change, and, um, the installation of plastic lawns really exasperates both. It, it, uh, the oil and gas industry releases carbon emissions to manufacture plastic, any kind of plastic, to make that stuff is contributing to our climate change problem, and to make particularly this product, which can only be, um, breaking down into its immediate environment, which is unregulated and uncontrolled into our public spaces, uh, contributing to our microplastics is very concerning. Uh, this is, um, uh, it, it's been known for years to cause this problem, many other municipalities in America have, uh, made it illegal to install this, uh, that's becoming of increasing frequency, and I believe Tampa should consider, um, eliminating the use of artificial turf, particularly in public spaces where it's known to have, uh, health impact. Uh, I do not believe it is right to expose the public to a product that is known to have this health impact. Um, and then also, as far as residential installation, there should be, that should be more controlled, it's, it's shocking the amount of, uh, fake plastic lawns that are being installed, they're known to be very hot, increasing the surface temperatures and contributing to the heat that we're facing, and they're known to contribute all of these microplastics. Last week, we had the EPA, um, say, you gotta remove these forever chemicals, these PFAS, these lawns contribute to that problem, that's going to be a growing, um, problem that we're going to pay a lot of money to clean up, and we want to fix that before it gets worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just, uh, my apologies, I, uh, was a terrible crash and was in traffic for almost an hour and a half, so just, uh, why, thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am, good morning, please say your name.
Yes, good morning, Connie Burton. Uh, first, I would like to, uh, thank, uh, the entire council, uh, for moving forward in the, uh, approving and establishing a, uh, re-racial reconciliation, um, committee. Uh, my very, very much concern is that I wish it would have been within a workshop setting, so we would had a opportunity to thrash out a whole bunch of ideas, hear from all of the council members as to what's their preference. Uh, I know Councilwoman Henderson has been trying to push that because it is a complicated issue, it is something that's going to be more than taking a couple of weeks to come to some type of final report. Uh, we're talking about ongoing issues that has dealt, uh, with African people in this city that has put us in a, a bad situation as we see this city progressing and moving forward. If you look at your workshop, uh, issue number one, it's very clear, there are organizations, and not this particular organization, but there's a lot of money that is thrown towards social justice, there are organizations that has targeted, uh, sororities, uh, paternities, uh, nonprofits, they all use the data to talk about how they're dealing with the issues of poverty and injustice, but if we had been concentrating, if there had been, uh, strategic reports, if there was somebody to come back and do an evaluation, we wouldn't be here. We are here because money is most times thrown at the problem, and people feel good at the end of the day. The Resolution 568 Committee has to be more thoughtful in saying, how do we start to heal it? The healing has not occurred because we have not dealt with it in ways in which we say in writing, we understand that we have not done things right, but each week when we, you address this agenda, and you're moving thousands and thousands of dollars, and we have economic deficits inside of our community, when we have issues of mass incarceration still going on in our community, it's not going to be by those organizations that can truly address these issues when they're going to the same pool and getting dollars. We plan on having a committee that wants to do strategic healing, and that mean that even some of the people that's been already selected to be on this committee has to be held accountable to this community for not doing the right thing. So again, thank you, and we look forward to moving forward.
Thank you very much, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, good morning.
Well, Whitmore Executive Director of City Tree, good morning, council.
Good morning.
I'll begin by saying it is an absolute privilege to burn a vacation day to be with you for today's upcoming tree workshop. Question I suppose is why someone would do it. I won't lie, obviously, I love trees, I think they are some of the most majestic sentient creations on the planet, particularly our grand oaks. I suspect even the most hardened, profit driven builder marvels at their grandeur before cutting them down. And the benefit mature trees have in this community goes without saying, especially since I only have three minutes, and you've heard it all before. But I believe the real reason I took time off to be here with you is because I love Tampa, and I think it is an amazing city, trying hard, thanks in part to all of you, to do the right things, and I wanted to be here as a show of support for one of those right things. Workshop focused on halting and hopefully reversing the not so slow demise of a canopy that very much defines this city and contributes so much to our quality of life. It's truly remarkable, perhaps even miraculous, that the canopy we fight so hard to protect, the nationally acclaimed urban forest that shields us from the fast approaching seemingly apocalyptic summers wasn't even supposed to be here. It evolved over the last century from scrub, born from giant oaks, now long gone. A gift from God and Joe Chalura, the results of tree codes and dedicated public servants at the Department of Natural Resources and a litany of private citizens and grassroots efforts, and you, result is a protective canopy at just the right time. And while cities all across this planet and countries are scrambling to revive canopies in the single digits, Tampa is in the enviable position to regain and retain its standing as the most tree covered city in the world. At a time when trees are trending, this city has the opportunity to position itself as literally the greenest city on earth, an achievement that can and will draw progressive residents to our neighborhoods, progressive businesses to our storefronts, business parks and office towers, but most importantly, ensure Tampa becomes a bastion of shade and carbon removal that not only benefits our citizens, but makes us the envy of an ever warming world. In closing, I just want to say I am so glad I don't, I need to be here as much as I used to be, and that is because I trust you, I believe in each and every one of you, and I am proud of you, of us, for seating what has to be one of the most diverse city councils in the nation. Thank you for your service, and thank you for protecting the trees and in doing the city of Tampa.
Thank you very much, sir. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Um, my name is Chagret Dawson, and as much as I appreciate people's service, I want to be telling you all, I, I'm sure you've all been served this, I did get your email reflecting that you had intended to address the matter I brought up in front of the city council, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, the gentleman said, I appreciate your service, and I know my man right here understands it also, for those of us who took that oath, and we were willing to pay for that oath with our lives, it's amazing how we here, like, I appreciate your service, and I always say it was my honor, because it was when I did it, and I joined when I was seventeen years old, some, almost forty years ago, but what I wanted to say is, I get tired of the lip service, so now you all been served with this Rhythm and Dames, which is only directing you to do what you should have done back in two thousand and seventeen, and it, it bothers me that I have to come here and go through this, because somebody said, you know, it sounds like we're begging you for something, and I don't beg for anything. I demand it the same way I expect people to demand me to fulfill the oath that I took, and you all took the same oath pursuant to chapter eight seventy-six of the Florida statute, subsection five, in fact, uh, when you all signed up to do these jobs or fulfill these responsibilities. But like the gentleman says, how they cut down the trees, it's amazing that when we demand what's ours, even pursuant to article one, section one of the Florida constitution, because all political powers inherent in the people, and you all know that, so, I know we can't talk about a whole lot because I'm suing you again, but I just wanted to make sure that the, the people of Tampa realize that the only way you can get anything to happen is you have to be willing to move towards your goal. I want those seven thousand emails, and we're gonna go down here, we're probably end up at the second DCA again, uh, to address it, because I don't trust anybody in Tampa, and as to Ms. Arabella Campbell and Charles Denton, who actually quit the case because he didn't want to just do the job that he took pursuant to eight seventy-six of the Florida statutes as well, and Ms. Arabella Campbell just came up with some concept that we didn't even discuss in the hearing, and for Mr. Sibella or Judge Sibella, I expect you to do your job and remove her immediately, if not sooner. And I'm not the only one who suffered these atrocities at the hands of the Department of Revenue and judges and other officials of the thirteenth judicial circuit and the second DCA, I'm just willing to come in here and stand for it. So, that being said, you all enjoy the rest of your day, and shout out to the University of Thomas Jefferson High School.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, ma'am, good morning.
Good morning, and I'm Valerie Bullott from Concelium and College Hill, I want to come and talk about Resolution 568, I seen on the paper that you all have certain organizations that you want to be a part of it, we should not have organization that have made a profit off our pain. For one, Hillsborough County got the highest recid- recidivism rate in the nation, so that tells me that planning for when people get out of prison, that's not working. We need some, some programs that deter or that stop people from entering into prison. Abe Brown Ministry, Abe Brown was a good man, he had an excellent legacy, whoever's running that, running it now, they are making a profit off of our pain. They have contracts with the transitional houses, and those are the people who allowed in their program, the people who were born and raised in that same neighborhood where Abe Brown Ministry sit, we can't partake in those programs. I went down there for myself and talked to Mr. Blunt, no, we cannot, he say he get government funding, and the government tell him how to spend the money. So, we can't use the same organizations and expect a different result, we can look at their fruit and see what they have done, and so far, it haven't made a difference. We need to think radical and think outside the box when it come to appointing organizations to 568, and we have to be radical, because when it come to jobs, economic stability and financial and, um, housing, black people are so far behind, we don't have time to pussyfoot around with it. We have to have targeted plans with goals that we can measure, and the organizations who you all are suggesting, they shouldn't be on, on 568 resolution. I see you got a workshop today with those organizations, what if the organizations you on the workshop, you, the funds that you give them tied into 568, and that would be a good start for changing the economic hardships that black people face, and it should also be something that should, can be measured. We don't need another workshop, we don't need another study, we don't need another seminar, we need programs and people that got professional expertise put onto 568 resolution board so that we can see a difference and we'll make a difference in our, in our environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name.
Hey, good morning, Stephanie Pointer. You know, it's funny, because I, I, I said this before 568 kind of started to become a committee, that it, it needs somebody to carry the football, and when the mayor announced publicly that she doesn't want to touch it with a ten foot pole, I'm sorry, but that's completely inappropriate, it's wrong. Why is it that, within her city, she's the mayor, she's the leadership, she said, I don't want to touch this? It's wrong, and she's the one who controls city staff, and y'all did a really nice job of putting together a different way to make things happen, but you guys aren't supposed to be the bosses, it's her job to be the boss of all the people who work for staff for the city, and this is wrong that it's being ignored by the mayor. I, I, you know, and here's the thing, like I said before, the budget committee kind of floundered about how we were gonna move forward, yesterday I find out that the natural resources committee that was supposed to be put in place eleven years ago never happened. That you guys don't control, that's on the mayor. So all these folks who have shown up here, and I said this before, we started making motions and resolutions, that you have, you can't ignore the folks who are coming in here, they've worked their butts off on it, and to not have them being members of these boards is, is absolutely ludicrous. You guys have to take this into consideration, and somebody over there in the next building over there needs to be embarrassed that she doesn't support something as important to the citizens of the city as this is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public that's wishing to speak? If not, I'm gonna go to the registered public speakers. All right, we have, uh, Lorraine Perino who's here for three and four, uh, Carol Anne Bennett who's here for three and four, and they will speak after three and four. We also have Rashima McCoy Green, if she's on, no? All right, that concludes public comment in the general sense, we're gonna kick off the workshop with item number one regarding the EDC, and who is here to start that? That was a motion initiated by Councilmember Hurtak. Um, I see Javier is here, good morning, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I, I wanna...
Good morning, council.
Good morning. I want to thank you for your written report, I appreciate it. It's, it does talk about who does, um, or what the economic, what the EDC is doing, how we're getting groups to work together, but it doesn't really discuss raising the median, median wage, and that's really the big issue, and it's hard, I get that, but where do we go? How do we keep moving that forward? Because as you heard from public comment today, that's one of the things that the citizens are asking us to do, is to provide jobs that have better median wages, and I hear about all these companies we're bringing to town and bringing talent, we don't need to bring talent here, we need to, we need to use the talent we have and, and pay them well. So our, our area median income has risen drastically, but it's leaving the people who live here behind. So, so what do we do? How do we move the people who've already been here forward? And it's not something we're gonna be able to solve today, I tru, I truly understand that, but we've got to get that conversation rolling and seeing what we can do, so I really appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hurtak, and, uh, so again, Javier, Mayor and Director of Economic Opportunity.
Uh, for the record, Brenda McKenzie, Director of Workforce Partnerships for the city.
And so, we can go over the whole memo if you prefer, or we can, we can speak specifically on items two and three that directly address the issue of, uh, of the, uh, average wage, um, and then we will, I guess, develop, uh, opportunities for, for continued dialogue in that sense. Would that work?
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Good morning, council, happy to share with you today. Uh, in terms of the minimum wage and increasing opportunities for people from an economic standpoint and economic mobility, there has been a fair amount of legwork that's already been done. Uh, the mayor's workforce council started a couple of years ago working on a collaborative action plan, one to assess the resources that are already out there, uh, two, to look for high potential wage opportunities, and three, to look for upskilling opportunities to reach traditional and non-traditional, uh, persons who are looking to increase their economic mobility. In terms of minimum wage specifically, as you know, the city does not control the minimum wage, that's currently set at about twelve dollars an hour, we know that's not enough for people to have a living wage. If we look at living wage, there's a number of calculators that are available, uh, there's one at MIT, there's... There's one at MIT. There's different ones you can use. That tends to be around twenty-two dollars an hour. So we know if we focus on the minimum wage, that's not going to get us to the minimum, to the living wage. But how do we upskill and bring opportunities for folks so that they can move along the continuum? And there's a number of key industries that Tampa has, working with EDC and others, that are really moving forward. So how do we get those companies to train their employees, to put them in pathways so that they can move along? Whether it's healthcare, how do you move from a CNA to be an RN? Whether it's in technology, how do you move from an entry level on up? Looking for those opportunities and working for the trainers to do that. We had to coalesce fifty-five different organizations in our ecosystem to put together the initial game plan of how we leverage that. That was concluded or published in September of last year, and we're now actively working on the implementation. We do look at a number of non-traditional populations, returning citizens, those who are justice involved, because we want to make sure, no matter what your circumstances may be, you have access to the economic opportunity that's really burgeoning here in Tampa. I'm happy to say that we were awarded last week a technical assistance grant for high potential innovative opportunities for returning citizens. We'll be partnering with a number of organizations in order to find that. It is a year-long opportunity. We will be able to benchmark with high potential opportunities throughout the country and beyond so that we can customize solutions that make sense for Tampa and bring them home. So we're actively working. We're all ears in terms of that collaboration, because we know we're better together, and we certainly want to do that.
Thank you. How much was the grant for?
It is technical assistance. So they pay for the technical expertise. They pay for travel so that we can coalesce with the cohort, but if there's not a monetary amount. Now typically with these things, it's a two-step process. So first you do that technical assistance planning part, and then you apply for the financial assistance. We have partnered with others, including the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay. So people know that we are actively looking for opportunities. We're actively looking to see, how do we get people upskilled and get that training? Not only so they can get that entry-level job. It's not about a job. It's really about building that career that's going to sustain themselves and their families for a lifetime.
And I have one more question about that. And how, how are we going to, what are our measurable goals here? How are we tracking this? How are we, and how can the community find out about these opportunities?
So there is a website, tpa works dot com, that is active now, and folks can go there. The plan that I referenced is located on that, on that document, so they can see the action steps. They can see the organizations that were involved. They can see how we're moving along the continuum as we move forward. But we don't stop with those groups. We're constantly talking to others now that the plan is out there and we're in implementation mode. Because again, there's a lot to do, and we know the city by ourselves. We can't do it by ourselves. We have to actively engage partners in order to move forward.
And, and how are you reaching out to the communities? Who's, who's doing that outreach?
So we have about twenty-five members of the Workforce Council themselves. They have outreach to about eighty members of a broader group that they are working with, and we continue to, to connect and talk to other people along the way.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have questions?
Anybody else have questions or comments? Yes, sir. Councilmember Veer.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, and thank you guys all for your hard work and whatnot. I wanted to talk about, one of the things we're going to be looking at in the committee that's been spoken about here today is returning citizens, and I know that we've worked together on some programs, and y'all have done really, really great work. I mean, I, I do think it's good to give the city a real pat on the back for this issue, because a couple of years ago, there wasn't much happening, and now there's a lot happening. And we can use that as a foundation on just a really, really big issue. I think the statistic is that every year, seven hundred and fifty thousand Americans leave incarceration, the prison system, and within three years, two-thirds of them will be back in contact with the, with the criminal justice system, and that's a real, real failure of society. So, you know, we're doing things, I know, could you talk about the grant that we were able to secure? Or the, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars from the city of Tampa. I believe it was three hundred thousand dollars. It wasn't a grant. It was a budget allocation we worked together on for return to work, for the secular arm of Abe Brown Ministries, if you want to talk about that. We worked with Commissioner Myers.
Absolutely. Definitely with your guidance, we've been on the cutting edge on this issue. We were able to partner with Career Source Tampa Bay. They worked with Abe Brown Ministries in designing a program. That program is pretty well subscribed. So we have a hundred thousand to contribute to that. The, the agreement itself has been negotiated, and that will be coming back to you for final approval. They've been looking to connect people to that program. What is nice, if I could say, about the NLC opportunity that we were recently awarded is it enables us to take it to the next level. So now somebody has a job. But how do we actively help to upskill them so that they can move up in that organization? For instance, if someone is interested in hospitality, maybe they get a job at the hotel across the street. But how do they move from that entry-level position to a management position? And so working with partners like HCC, who is then working with partners like USF and the Hospitality School, how do we provide those opportunities so people can move as far as their talents will take them?
And if I may, Mr. Chair, yeah, and that's, and again, such an important issue that I see local government doing more and more on. I mean, the basic issue here is that, you know, we have to be able to equip people with the tools that they need to succeed so that we can teach a person to fish for life. But especially with returning citizens, that's such an important issue, because there's such a stigma out there. There's such a prejudice out there, things that are implicit in people. I, I, look, I'm transparent. I always tell people, ten years ago, you would ask me about this issue, and I would have thought to myself, eh, maybe not my issue. It is my issue. Like I always tell people, if you go to church on Sunday, it sure as heck has to be your issue. Because it's an issue of restoration, and it's an issue of making sure that people who just want to be able to work to put food on the table for their families and have dignity and respect are able to do that. And there's a lot of other things that we could talk about, skilled trade apprenticeships. We've made some real good movement on that. Work for people with disabilities, et cetera. But the major issue is equipping people with the skills that they need to improve their own life. And, you know, here in Florida, we could have a big discussion on our public school system. My, my son goes to public schools. And we, we have miles to go, and in fact, in my opinion, we've retreated on that issue a lot, and there's no greater investment in the workforce and a good quality public school system. But I could talk forever about that, but I won't. But thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Councilwoman Hurtak, for bringing this up.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
So I, I don't want this to be the end of this conversation, and I think it's actually kind of the beginning. And as the folks came up today to talk about Resolution 568 and the new committee that's been formed, I would certainly hope that, that they would be, that you all would be invited during the, the conversation on economic development. But also, the thing that I'm asking you to tie in is what we are working on with youth. So not just a summer youth employment program, but how do we, how do we get youth? A lot of it starts very early. So we're looking at parks programs. We're looking at things to, to reach young people. And then, once we have them, as they get into teenagers, and as they're looking for work, as of the age that they can, they can get a job, what are we doing to help them do that? Right now, we're not finding that connection. We're doing that somewhat with the city, which is...